Last everybody, please stand so we can salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor Brown?
Here.
Counselor Judith Garcia?
President.
Counselor Taniri Garcia?
President.
Counselor Lopez?
Here.
Counselor Robinson?
Here.
Counselor Vito?
Present.
Counselor Recupero?
Here.
Counselor DeJesus?
Present.
Counselor Hattlerberg?
Here.
Counselor Vega? Counselor Taylor?
Here.
Ten members present, one absent. You have a quorum.
Okay. First order of business?
First, memoriams and celebratory resolutions. We have a resolution introduced by Council President Robinson and all members of the City Council for Hispanic Heritage Month. Whereas during National Hispanic Heritage Month, September fifteenth through October fifteenth, the Chelsea City Council recognizes the contributions made by and the important presence of Hispanic and Latino Americans to the United States and celebrates their heritage and culture. And whereas Hispanics have had a profound and positive influence on our country through their strong commitment to family, faith, hard work, and service, enhancing and shaping our national character with centuries-old traditions that reflect the multi-ethnic and multicultural customs of their community. And whereas there are more than four million seven hundred thousand Hispanic-owned firms in the United States, supporting millions of employees nationwide and contributing more than six hundred billion dollars in revenue to the economy of the United States. And whereas more than eighty thousand Hispanics served in the Vietnam War, representing 5.5% of the individuals who made the ultimate sacrifice for the United States in that conflict, even though Hispanics comprised only 4.5% of the population of the United States during the Vietnam War. And whereas approximately 148,000 Hispanic soldiers served in the Korean War, including the Sixty-Fifth Infantry Regiment of the Commonwealth of Puerto Rico, the only active-duty segregated Latino military unit in United States history. And whereas Hispanic Americans are dedicated public servants, holdings post at the highest levels of the government of the United States. Now therefore be it resolved that the Chelsea City Council hereby declare September fifteenth through October fifteenth, 2023, as Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Chelsea, and encourages participation in this annual tribute by learning and celebrating the generations of Hispanic Americans who have positively influenced and enriched our nation.
Chair recognizes Counselor Damali Vito.
I move to adopt unanimously under suspension if there are no objections. Can I speak on it briefly?
You can.
I don't want to say much because this obviously captures it all, but I do want to acknowledge our beautiful, diverse community of Hispanics and that this is the first time in history that this body, this City Council, has had as many Hispanics on the council that's actually representative of the community, and that's something that I think we should be celebrating. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Brown?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also want to echo that we celebrate this celebration of starts on the fifteenth, run for a full month, the culture, the background, the accomplishments of all, the work that's been done and continue to be done. Want to recognize our community here has been spoken, the work they do to serve in our community, bring folks together and also make this community what it is today. This community today is so much better and so much farther off than twenty years ago, and we continue to strive together, so it's great to be a speaker on this motion. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other speakers?
Just briefly, I echo the words of my fellow counselors, highlighting the many community leaders that for many years have shaped and supported the growth of this community. In particular, in my district, I can't say that my community could have gotten where it has gotten without the support of many of the leaders that still are taking leadership today. Mildre Valentin, Maria Iraola, many more, many, many more. And I continue to work with them under their leadership, right, because it is my duty to make sure that I am able to continue to support them as they continue to take the lead in my district and across the city.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other speakers? Seeing none, next order.
Next, we have a resolution introduced by Council President Robinson and all members of the City Council for Father Stanley Rousseau's twenty-fifth anniversary of priestly ordination. Whereas Reverend Father Stanley Rousseau was born in Haiti and raised by a devout family of Catholic educators, with his uncle serving as a priest. And whereas at age five, he entered the Brothers of Christian Instruction, a Catholic school in Jassel, Haiti, finishing his primary classes at age eleven and concluding his high school education in nineteen eighty-five. And whereas prior to entering major seminary in nineteen ninety-one, he spent two years of vocational discernment in his home parish and in a center for postulance to the priesthood in the capital of Port-au-Prince. And whereas he was ordained into the priesthood on July twelfth, nineteen ninety-eight, in Saint Jacques and Philippe Cathedral in Jassel, Haiti, serving seven months as a parochial vicar before being appointed administrator of the Parish of Our Lady of Loretto in Bel An. And whereas during his tenure in Bel An, he organized the parish in ecclesial communities, facilitating the active participation of the faithful in the life of the parish, while helping provide the community with portable water, a yearly medical mission, electricity, and the construction of an elementary and secondary school. And whereas after completing two master's degrees from Boston College, one in pastoral ministry and another in educational administration, Father Rousseau returned to Haiti, becoming the superintendent of Catholic schools in the Diocese of Jassel. And whereas from 2013 to 2023, Father Rousseau served the Haitian-American communities of Saint John in Cambridge, Saint Catherine and Saint Joseph in Somerville, Parish of the Holy Name at West Roxbury, and the Tri Parish community of Saint Mary, Saint Anne, and Sacred Heart in Quincy, currently serving as pastor of Blessed Mother of the Morning Star Parish in Revere, Chelsea, and Everett. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the members of the Chelsea City Council, congratulate Reverend Father Stanley Rousseau on the twenty-fifth anniversary of his priestly ordination and recognize him for the positive impact he has had on the community through his steadfast faith.
Chair?
There are no objections.
Seeing no objections, so moved. Calvin Brown, you have the floor.
Great, thank you, Mr. President. I just want to congratulate Father Stanley on his twenty-fifth anniversary. Twenty-five years in any business is an accomplishment, but he keep pushing on, and I want to congratulate him on the work that he's doing. They do the annual Christmas gathering every year, so I look forward to supporting him and look forward to being there with them, and I want to thank him for his service, not only in Chelsea, because he's, his priesthood and his work here goes beyond the walls of Chelsea, but the surrounding communities, so I just want to wish him well on his work. Thank you.
Thank you. Next order of business?
Next, we have a public hearing on a proposed amendment to Section thirty-four dash one oh six J of the Chelsea Code of Ordinances, which would allow for the issuance of visitor parking stickers to residential units that receive relief from off-street parking requirements.
So anybody here for the public meeting? If you are, you can take the podium, state your name and address for the record. It's in regards to the parking issue. Seeing none, we'll close that portion of the meeting.
Next, we have public speaking.
Anybody for public speaking, take the podium, state your name and address for the record?
Hi, my name is Blanca Gacharna, and I live on sixteen Lambert Avenue here in Chelsea, and I would like to address Chelsea Pride. So Chelsea Pride has been suspended from the New England Commonwealth Youth Football and Charing Association for a lot of things. This is a program that, I mean, before it was Pop Warner, now Chelsea Pride has picked off, but this is something I, as a child, was in, kept me off the streets, kept my brothers off the streets, kept a lot of kids off the streets. In talks with the association members, eleven cities in that association unanimously voted Chelsea out and will not be asking them to return due to the situation with the people running the league. They don't have a board, they refuse help. We, as parents, have volunteered to offer assistance, they don't want it. The association has also offered to help, they don't want it. When questioned as to why the city of Chelsea, why the parents don't get involved, why the city doesn't get involved, they said they always have so many excuses. I specifically wanted to know what they were. And I was very offended to know that they stated that most of the kids in this program come from single-family homes, they come from families that do not care about them, and they just don't want to get involved. As a parent, that I've had my kids in sports since they were small, they're now fourteen and twelve, if I'm not an involved parent, what am I doing on the Chelsea Youth Basketball League Board, trying to build up that program that almost died last year for the kids? I'm here to advocate for the children, because what they did on Wednesday, they sent out a mass text just telling us that they were shut down, demanded their equipment, no apology, no empathy for the parents, nothing for the kids, nothing, no refunds. And if you would like to reach out to the New England Association, you guys can, because they can tell you exactly what went on, including false documents. And this is something that now, what are we going to do for the kids? They broke my kid's heart. My kid was dying to play football. They've been on probation since last year. And my thing is, all you City Council, you guys are asked for our votes in our wards, but I don't see any of yous involved in the sports programs. This is a program that's dying and that has been dying for years. You want our votes, you guys are supposed to take care of the future of the city, and that's these kids. I had people to help me get through a lot of stuff, through school, through trouble. What do these kids have now? You're taking them, we're trying to put them in programs, get them active, get them out of the streets, get them out of their homes, outside the video games, and when this happens, what are we doing? We're just acting like we don't care, and we need to care a lot more. Because if I give you my vote, I'm expecting you to take care of my child, because I don't need to be taken care of, the kids do. And I would like to see the City Council get more involved. I'm begging, because the things I have on this piece of paper are so disturbing, very, very disturbing. And I know a lot of you have grown up in Chelsea, and it's sad to know that people that grew up in Chelsea are the ones hurting their own city. That's what's sad to me. And by falsing medical reports, you putting that child at risk just for what, for a win? That's really low for me. And I would love for the city of Chelsea to begin to get more involved in these programs. It's important for these kids. These kids fight for their own lives in a middle school.
One minute.
In a middle school, they fight for their lives, they're going to football, to, these coaches are teaching them, you're a family, you take care of each other, the same way on the field, you take care of each other out the field. Now you're separating, you're breaking that bond. These kids now have nothing to do for the season. Us parents are struggling to find out what we can do with these kids. The association said that we can bring them to any surrounding city, but Chelsea Pride didn't even tell us that, and the season already started. That's all I have to say, but I really hope you guys open up your eyes a little bit more.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
My name is Frank Medbury. I live at seventeen Hooper Street, and I'm also here for Chelsea Pride. I want to reiterate everything that Ms. Blanca said. She's very passionate, I don't think I could have explained it quite as passionately as she has. You know, there are a couple disturbing things, like she said, and I've seen a couple of you at some of the banquets for football, I know that at least one of your children played for Chelsea Pride, so this should affect you as much as it's affecting us. You know, I spoke, this is all really recent. We both had done some legwork to try to find out exactly what's going on. I reached out to Amanda, I think she's the director for the Chelsea Public Schools Sports. I reached out to Bay Cavallata, Quavada. Both of them told me that Chelsea Pride is an independent organization, that they don't oversee them in any way. But yet this organization uses public property, school property, they get grants through the city, and if they're falsifying medical records, which is serious enough, where is this money going? We need some oversight, especially knowing what we know now. You know, it was pointed out that the program has been going down for years, and we have parents that refuse to let their children play for this organization because of how the lack of communication, the lack of support that parents offer, that they don't accept. There are a few things that we just need help with, you know, there needs to be some oversight, especially if they're taking city funds and using city property. I have two children, my oldest has been in Chelsea Pride baseball and football for a number of years, and we can see the decline over the years. My youngest is, just started his first year, was practicing for over a month, and then everything was pulled out days before the first game, you know. Now they're at home, now we've got to figure out what options they have, because this is no longer an option for them. You know, I request some oversight, you know, find out exactly what's going on, find out exactly where our money is going. I don't know where the money comes from exactly, but I assume it's coming through the city, whether it's a grant or, you know, however it's doled out. I definitely think some answers should be asked, you know, or questions should be asked and answered, you know. That's really, that's really all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Anthony Bon Giovanni. I'm at forty-six Galouli Road. It's a road where most of the people go to Home Depot. They go into now New Burlington coming up, which is great. But where's my City Council? You are, right? Do you know me? No. Did you ever approach me? No. Yes, act, once, when you need my vote. When was the last time you saw me again? Never.
To the chair, Mr.?
So.
To the chair, Mr. Bon Giovanni.
Pardon me?
You can't speak to the councilors directly, go to the chair.
I'm not speaking to anyone, I'm in to all of them, including at large, but I'm speaking to one incident, okay? Actually, I missed the Clark Have One Way Street proposal. I hope when that comes in front of you, you will approve to the One Way. That road is a disastrous. You know, I use that to go back again to the Webster Ave, and most of the time I try to eliminate and go into the Parkway Plaza, so please have that in your mind and say yes to One Way Street. Two, about a year ago, maybe less, Stockton was approached with the One Way, with the non-truck sign put in to go into the plaza and not out of the plaza. The sign has been missing since this winter. Trucks are going back and forth, including the city workers, that they are the Aqua, whatever, they use that road to go back and forth with a front-end loader, load with dirt, load it with stones, load it with anything possible, and they go there at least four, five times back and forth. The whole street is shaken, eventually we're going to need a new street, because the street is not made to have a ten-wheeler or eighteen-wheeler going through to the shopping center. Where is the sign and why we are not enforcing? Two, I'm really disappointed in the city, is a pride city. We have voc the field with a flag, the flag is hanging by a one string, it's been there since July, the same way, I have not, and look at it, at that flag when it flies, and it go in all of the direction. Where is the city taking a walk and see what flags are not in the right place? That is not the city that you represent. The people who come across from Everett, the people who come across from Revere, and they're going through Broadway, and they see all the flags that they are shrinking and they, they, they should be changed. Where the patriotism that we used to have in Chelsea? Where the sign that say we are proud of Chelsea, and they're not there anymore?
One minute.
Okay, so with that in mind, this is what I came, but also I heard the prior speakers about the kids. I live right across from a park where the kids play basketball, where the kindergarten come in the morning, and I enjoy to see them running around. I enjoy the people playing basketball, they're so peaceful, they're so together, they have a teamwork, they look to each other like she said it, but is that the only park that we have? We have voc, which is rented, instead of having youth baseball, instead of having youth soccer, instead of having anything that involves the city children. So with that in mind, this is the end. Please, take a look at the care of your own kids, your own future resident of Chelsea. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Seeing none, we'll close that portion of the meeting. Next order?
Next, we have approval of the minutes for the August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three special meeting of the City Council.
Counselor Taylor moves to adopt a minute as written. Seeing no objection, so moved.
Next, we have communications from the City Manager. We have a communication received from City Manager Ned Keef regarding quest for conflict of interest law exemption. Dear councilors, the Chelsea Fire Department wishes to hire retired Chelsea City Department employee, Mr. Richard Parisi of Peabody, to a part-time position, filling vacant fire detail requests. Because Mr. Parisi is an existing municipal employee with E nine-one-one Emergency Telecommunications dispatcher part-time, with a financial interest in this separate matter, he needs an exemption vote by the City Council from the statutory conflict of interest laws.
Most accepting file of communication under suspension, and there'll be some coming up on the new business.
Next, we have a communication received from City Manager Ned Keef regarding the Boston Foundation Grant. Dear councilors, I am writing to request formal City Council approval acceptance of a $200,000 grant from the Boston Foundation. This past spring, the Boston Foundation notified the city that it had been awarded a $200,000 grant to the Resilience Fund. The grant will provide funds as direct financial assistance for low and moderate income households experiencing emergencies affecting housing and economic stability and reasonable administrative costs necessary to operate the fund.
Mr. President, I ask that we waive the rest of the reading, accept and file under suspension, if there are no objections.
No objection, there'll be some coming up on the new business.
Next, we have a communication from City Manager Ned Keef regarding a request to appropriate Commonwealth Transportation Infrastructure Funds. My apologies. Dear councilors, I am writing to request that the City Council appropriate $69,258.80 in available funds from the Commonwealth Transportation Infrastructure Fund to assist in our FY twenty-four street and sidewalk program. If approved, the appropriated funds would supplement our existing DPW road improvement line item and will be spent by the city before the close of FY twenty-four. These extra funds available for appropriation come from the recent annual distribution to the city based upon rides originating in Chelsea from transportation network companies such as Uber and Lyft. As part of the new regulatory scheme, TNCs are required to pay the Commonwealth a twenty cent per ride assessment. One half of that assessment is distributed proportionately to each city and town in the Commonwealth based upon the number of rides that originate in the municipality.
Mr. President, I ask that we waive the rest of the reading, accept and file under suspension, there'll be something coming up on the new business.
So moved, Damali moves to accept and file a communication under suspension with some coming up on the new business.
Next, we have a communication received from City Manager Ned Keef regarding the American Library Association Grant. Dear councilors, I am writing to request formal City Council acceptance of a $1,000 grant from the American Library Association. This past spring, the American Library Association notified the Chelsea Public Library that it had been awarded a $1,000 grant titled National Endowment for Humanities Great Stories Club. The library has accepted ALA's conditions to host three book discussions with young adult participants.
Mr. President, I ask that we waive the rest of the reading, accept and file unanimously under suspension, there'll be something coming up on the new business.
Counselor Damali moves to accept and file a communication under suspension, there's some coming up on the new business.
Next, we have a communication received from City Manager Ned Keef regarding approval for department to pay prior year expenses. Dear councilors, I am writing to request approval for our Department of Public Works to make payments of prior year expenses from their FY twenty-four budgets. From time to time, municipal agencies are unable to effectuate payments to a vendor in the year that the goods or services are provided. When such instances occur, the City Council must approve the payments from the current year department budget for the prior year's obligations. Thus far this year, we have identified an outstanding Department of Public Works obligation of $7,018.51 to Direct Energy for the supply of natural gas to three eighty Beecham Street for the period of August 2022.
Mr. President, I ask that we waive the rest of the reading, accept and file a communication under suspension, there'll be something coming up on the new business.
Seeing no objection, something will be coming up on the new business.
Next, we have a communication received from City Manager Ned Keef regarding Board of Health appointment. Dear councilors, pursuant to Section four dash two of the Charter of the City of Chelsea, I am writing to recommend for appointment to the Chelsea Board of Health, Mr. Mario Fernandez of Chelsea, for the recently vacated three-year term expiring on February twenty-fifth, 2025. Mr. Fernandez is a Chelsea native and resident and is currently a physician's assistant at Boston Children's Hospital. I respectfully request your approval of this appointment, copies of his cover letter and resume are attached.
And move to a second reading?
Yes, accept and file a communication, move to a second reading. Counselor Vito, seeing no objections, so moved.
Next, we have a communication received from City Manager Ned Keef regarding Chelsea Cultural Council appointment. Dear councilors, pursuant to Section four dash two of the Charter of the City of Chelsea, I am writing to recommend for appointment to the Chelsea Cultural Council, Ms. Yasmin Gravara Alvarez of Chelsea, for the recently vacated three-year term expiring November seventh, 2025.
Mr. President, I ask that we waive the reading and move this to a second reading under suspension, if there are no objections.
Accept and file a communication, move to a second reading, Counselor Vito.
Next, we have a communication received from City Manager Ned Keef regarding request for conflict of interest law exemption. Dear councilors, the City Clerk's Elections Department has been working with human resources to onboard election administrators and poll workers as municipal employees for elections. I am requesting that the City Council approve an exemption vote from statutory conflict of interest laws to hire city and school employees and board and commission members for these election cycles. Because they are existing municipal employees with a financial interest in this separate matter, they will need an exemption vote by the City Council from the statutory conflict of interest laws. I respectfully request the City Council approve this exemption. All work performed by the election administrators and poll workers will be outside of their normal hours as employees. Please see Mass General Law, Chapter two sixty-eight A, Section twenty.
Accept and file a communication under suspension, if there are no objections, there'll be something coming up on the new business.
Something coming up on the new business. Thank you, Counselor.
Next, we have communications and petitions to the council. We have a communication received from Daphna Crook Gordon of Toward Independent Living and Learning Incorporated.
Under suspension, seeing no objections, so moved.
Next, we have a communication received from John De Priest, Director of Planning, Permanence and Land Use Planning, regarding zoning amendment, Section thirty-four dash one oh six J, subsection six, relief for off-street parking. Dear Counselor Robinson, at a meeting of the Chelsea Planning Board held on Tuesday, June twenty-seventh, 2023, at which a quorum was present and a public hearing was held, the planning board reviewed the proposed zoning amendment to amend Section three thirty-four dash one oh six J, subsection six, to read as follows. "Any relief from off-street parking requirements in this zoning ordinance shall disqualify that location from participating in the residential parking sticker program. Any relief from off-street parking requirements in the zoning ordinance will still allow that location's residents to participate in the visitor parking pass program. The board voted unanimously to recommend that the council approve the amendment as proposed."
Accept and file a communication under suspension, if there are no objections, and can I speak on it briefly?
You can, and there'll be some coming up on the new business.
You know what, I'll speak then.
Have the floor, Counselor.
I'll speak when the order comes up. Thank you.
Next, we have a communication received to the City Council from Kathy Reinstein of Roca. of Roca. Dear City Council President Robinson, I hope this message finds you, your family, and your fellow council members doing well. We are truly thankful for the partnership that we share with the City of Chelsea and the Chelsea City Council. Your commitment to young people in the center of urban violence, poverty, and trauma is needed now more than ever, and we are appreciative for the special attention that you give to those in the community who need it most. We are especially grateful for the support that the city has participated, provided to the brave and resilient young people at Roca that we collectively serve. Copied here is Roca's Chelsea Director Joe Fumari and Roca's Executive Vice President of New England Scott Scharfenberg. We realize that you are all very busy, but we would like the opportunity to meet with the City Council and provide an update on our young people and our work with them.
I ask that we waive the rest of the reading, um, and accept and file a communication under suspension, it's just calling for a meeting, so I guess we'll.
Call for a conference. Next order of business.
Next, we have a copy of a communication received addressed to the City Council from Stacy Smith, Chelsea resident and member of the Chelsea Black Community Caucus. Hello, I am writing the Council to be heard on a matter of a street name that was changed. The street in question is now Arlington Street Extension, when in all reality, this is the other end, the beginning of Walnut Street. There are generations of black, Hispanic, and Jewish families that were born and raised on that very street. It is extremely unfair that the local government changed the name, erasing our history. This is hurtful, especially considering the fact that some of those residents were military veterans, small business owners, and wonderful families that faced many hardships before settling here in Chelsea. We deserve better, possibly a way in recognition of the black veterans that resided there on that very street and give us our street name back to Walnut Street so that future generations can reflect where their ancestors once thrived. Personally, I am a fifth generation of my family here in Chelsea. Adding my grandchildren, we are seven generations here in this community. My father grew up at forty-four Walnut Street along with thirteen brothers and sisters. His aunts, uncles, and grandparents also resided on Walnut Street. According to the U.S. Census and Family Knowledge, my great-grandfather was a World War One veteran. Our ancestors migrated from Nova Scotia in the late eighteen hundreds, settling across Suffolk County and surrounding areas. Please consider this topic for an agenda with a resolution of a way for those black veterans that resided in the area and Walnut Street to be Walnut Street once again. There is great support on this matter and residents want to be heard, thank you all.
Accept and file the communication under suspension if there are no objections.
Yeah, it needs to be referred back to the City Manager.
To the City Manager?
Thank you, Councilor.
Next, we have a copy of a communication received from the Traffic and Parking Commission regarding the meeting held on September fifth, twenty twenty three.
Seeing no objections, uh, will be adopted.
Next, we have a copy of a communication received from the Traffic and Parking Commission regarding action items that were approved at the June sixth, twenty twenty three Traffic and Parking Commission meeting.
Thank you, Councilor, seeing no objections, so move.
Can I clarify before we move on?
Sure.
Did we move the communication with Kathy Reinstein to a subcommittee?
Yes.
Next, we have unfinished business. We have an order introduced by Council President Robinson. Order that section thirty four dash one oh six J of the Chelsea Code of Ordinances, City of Chelsea, Massachusetts, read as follows. Any relief from off-street parking requirements in the zoning ordinance shall disqualify that location from participating in the residential parking sticker program. Any relief from off-street parking requirements in the zoning ordinance will still allow that location's residents to participate in the visitor parking pass program.
Chair recognizes Councilor Damali Vito.
Move to adopt by roll call vote, but I'd like to speak on it briefly.
You have the floor, Councilor.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this is an old ordinance that we did a couple of years ago. Um, so when a new developer would come into the city, they would say, you know, there are people aren't, they're not bringing their cars, they're they're commuting, they're using the T to come here, but then what they do is even, they get relief for parking, but then the people that lived in the building were still parking on off-street. So we kinda put this ordinance in place to say, well, put your money where your mouth is. If people are not needing parking, then they won't qualify for our public or for the public on on-street parking. But when we passed that ordinance, what we failed to do was create a situation where residents would be able to get stickers for visitors. So this doesn't change that ordinance, it just adds to it. I I believe that was, um, that happened under former President Abeyaneda. Um, and so what we want to do is add this to the existing ordinance just so that the folks that are not participating in our on-street parking program can still have visitors come and visit.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other speakers on the motion? Seeing none, we'll ask for a roll call on the adoption.
Councilor Brown?
Yes.
Councilor Judith Garcia?
Yes.
Councilor Tenere Garcia?
Yes.
Councilor Lopez?
Yes.
Councilor Robinson?
Yes.
Councilor Recupero?
Yes.
Councilor Vito?
Yes.
Councilor De Jesus?
Yes.
Councilor Haddler?
Yes.
Councilor Vega?
Yes.
Councilor Taylor?
Yes.
Eleven in favor, none opposed, what is adopted? Next, we move on to new business. We have an order introduced by Council President Robinson. Order that the Chelsea City Council hereby approves a conflict of interest exemption pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter two sixty eight A, Section twenty B, for the part-time fire detail position in the Chelsea Fire Department to be held by Mr. Richard Parisi effective immediately.
Move to adopt by roll call vote.
Councilor Vito moves a roll call vote on the adoption. See no objections, so the clerk will call a roll.
Councilor Brown?
Yes.
Councilor Judith Garcia?
Yes.
Councilor Tenere Garcia?
Yes.
Councilor Lopez?
Yes.
Councilor Robinson?
Yes.
Councilor Recupero?
Yes.
Councilor Vito?
Yes.
Councilor De Jesus?
Yes.
Councilor Haddler?
Yes.
Councilor Vega?
Yes.
And Councilor Taylor?
Yes.
Eleven opposed, none, eleven in favor, none opposed, conflict of interest exemption is adopted. Next, we have an order introduced by Council President Robinson. Order that the Chelsea City Council, in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter forty four, Section fifty three A, authorizes the City Manager to accept a grant from the Boston Foundation in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars.
Councilor Haddler moves to adopt on a roll call vote, seeing no objections, the clerk will call a roll.
Councilor Brown?
Yes.
Councilor Judith Garcia?
Yes.
Councilor Tenere Garcia?
Yes.
Councilor Lopez?
Yes.
Councilor Robinson?
Yes.
Councilor Recupero?
Yes.
Councilor Vito?
Yes.
Councilor De Jesus?
Yes.
Councilor Haddler?
Yes.
Councilor Vega?
Yes.
And Councilor Taylor?
Yes.
Eleven in favor, none opposed, grant is accepted. Next, we have an order introduced by Council President Robinson. Order that the Chelsea City Council authorizes the appropriation of sixty nine thousand two hundred and fifty eight dollars and eighty cents as a transfer from Special Revenue TNC Surcharge Distribution Fund from funds distributed to Chelsea from the Commonwealth Transportation Infrastructure Fund in order to supplement the fiscal year two twenty twenty four DPW Streets and Sidewalks Capital Road Improvements Line Item to be used for the purpose of roadway repair.
Council Haddler moves to adopt on a roll call vote, there are no objections. It's going, oh, sorry, actually going to a second reading.
Next, we have an order introduced by Council President Robinson. Order that pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter fifty four, Section twenty five B, Subsections eight C, one, the Chelsea City Council hereby approves early voting for the November seventh, twenty twenty three city election and that such early voting shall take place on Saturday, October twenty eighth, twenty twenty three, from nine AM to five PM, and then during normal business hours from Monday, October thirtieth, twenty twenty three, through Friday, November third, twenty twenty three, in the City Clerk's office at Chelsea City Hall.
Move to adopt by roll call vote.
See no objections, clerk will call a roll on the adoption.
Councilor Brown?
Yes.
Councilor Judith Garcia?
Yes.
Councilor Tenere Garcia?
Yes.
Councilor Lopez?
Yes.
Councilor Robinson?
Yes.
Councilor Recupero?
Yes.
Councilor Vito?
Yes.
Councilor De Jesus?
Yes.
Councilor Haddler?
Yes.
Councilor Vega?
Yes.
And Councilor Taylor?
Yes.
Eleven in favor, none opposed, order is adopted. Next, we have an order introduced by Council President Robinson. Order that the Chelsea City Council, in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter fifty four, Section fifty three A, hereby authorizes the City Manager to accept a one thousand dollar grant from the American Library Association.
Move to adopt by roll call vote.
Councilor Vito moves to adopt it on a roll call vote, seeing if there's no objections, seeing no objections, clerk will call a roll.
Councilor Brown?
Yes.
Councilor Judith Garcia?
Yes.
Councilor Tenere Garcia?
Yes.
Councilor Lopez?
Yes.
Councilor Robinson?
Yes.
Councilor Recupero?
Yes.
Councilor Vito?
Yes.
Councilor De Jesus?
Yes.
Councilor Haddler?
Yes.
Councilor Vega?
Yes.
And Councilor Taylor?
Yes.
Eleven in favor, none opposed, the order is adopted.
Next order.
Next, we have an order introduced by Council President Robinson. Order that the Chelsea City Council, in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter forty four, Section sixty four, Budget Management Procedures, whereby costs incurred in FY twenty three were not paid and are owed to vendors, and to meet this obligation, funds are required from the current year FY twenty four budget, authorizes the expenditure of seven thousand eighteen dollars and fifty one cents from the Department of Public Works expenditure lines to satisfy the unpaid costs to Direct Energy for natural gas supply invoices from the prior year. The Department has sufficient funds to meet all outstanding obligations, no new funds are required.
Move to a second reading? Does it require a second reading?
No.
Then I move to adopt by roll call vote?
We can roll call, um, we can roll call this. Councilor Damali Vito moves to adopt this on a roll call vote. Seeing no objections, the clerk will call a roll.
Councilor Brown?
Yes.
Councilor Judith Garcia?
Yes.
Councilor Tenere Garcia?
Yes.
Councilor Lopez?
Yes.
Councilor Robinson?
Yes.
Councilor Recupero?
Yes.
Councilor Vito?
Yes.
Councilor De Jesus?
Yes.
Councilor Haddler?
Yes.
Councilor Vega?
Yes.
And Councilor Taylor?
Yes.
Eleven in favor, none opposed, the order is adopted. Next, we have an order introduced by Council President Robinson. Order that the Chelsea City Council approve the warrant for the city preliminary election to be held on September twenty sixth, twenty twenty three.
Move to adopt by roll call vote.
Councilor Damali moves to adopt on a roll call vote, seeing no objections, the clerk will call a roll.
Councilor Brown?
Yes.
Councilor Judith Garcia?
Yes.
Councilor Tenere Garcia?
Yes.
Councilor Lopez?
Yes.
Councilor Robinson?
Yes.
Councilor Recupero?
Yes.
Councilor Vito?
Yes.
Councilor De Jesus?
Yes.
Councilor Haddler?
Yes.
Councilor Vega?
Yes.
Councilor Taylor?
Yes.
Eleven in favor, none opposed, the order and the warrant are approved. Next, we have an order received from, introduced by Council Recupero. Order that the City Manager look into hiring a new company to perform all streetlight repairs in the City of Chelsea.
Chair recognizes Council Recupero.
I'd like to adopt under suspension, like to speak on it.
You have the floor, Councilor.
Huh? Okay. Uh, for many years, I've been asking that our streetlights be taken care of, and they're never really taken care of. An average individual is not gonna go to a poll and find a poll number and then call DPW, and then DPW is gonna tell them, okay, we don't know if that's a problem with the electric company or us. We have a company that maintains the lights. Why can't they ma, if we hire somebody to maintain it, why can't they? I don't expect the City Manager to hire a new company. Maybe burn some type of fire underneath them to say, hey, look, go around and check these polls. Make sure, if you go on Broadway, at certain times, half of it is out. You know, that's a main street, and if you go down, you see half of the lights are out. Who's responsible for that? Like I just said earlier, the average individual is not gonna go to the poll, is not gonna get the poll number, and it's not gonna do it. So if we have a company to do that, they should do it. And that's all we're asking for, is for them to go around and look. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Next order.
Mr. President, can I just speak briefly?
You have the floor, Councilor.
Um, yeah, I just want a little clarity on this order. You know, the numbers on the poll are there for a reason, and if the residents can't read the numbers or can't call in, they can actually call the City Council, say, here's a poll at this intersection of a certain street, and, um, we can handle that. I know once I started, when I was very young, in the City Council, and we found out those little orange, what those little orange paste-on numbers were for, it was very easy for us to call the DPW or just call the number ourselves, they provide us the number. So I don't want, um, the neighbors or the residents of Chelsea thinking that we're not doing our job. We can do the job. If they don't feel comfortable calling, they can call the City Council District or a large, but we do have reasons and ways that we can handle those things. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Councilor Lopez?
As, uh, I agree with Councilor Recupero. When I just started eight years ago, it was one of my main things, lights, because there were so many lights out in the streets. It was so dark in the streets, and it's still, uh, there's a lot of lights out. I've been complaining, I, you know, what Councilor Calvin Brown said, call us, the City Council, and we get it done. It's not true. I've been done so many calls, so many emails, so many meetings, it doesn't get done. Thank you.
Councilor Vito.
Thank you, Mr. President, I want to echo the sentiments of, um, the previous speaker. Uh, it's a huge issue that we have here in the city. I remember when we first started eight years ago, we literally drove around the city and we'd take notes, but at the, at the end of the day, we don't know if it's the city's responsibility, um, if it's the electrical company's responsibility. And I think that what, uh, Council Recupero is asking is that we're a little more proactive on this. I remember speaking with, uh, former Chief Kaiser about this, and he talks about something called public safety by design. If you have more light, people are less likely to do dirt. When I was young and I wanted to get myself into trouble, I would look for dark spots because that's what we do. So I just think it, it makes more sense for us to make sure that our city is lit up like Las Vegas to ensure that everyone can feel safe and walk in our streets. So I do think that we do need to maybe light a fire under somebody, but we need to be a little bit more proactive about how we're keeping the city lit. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other speaker on the matter? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk, the next order of business.
I want to share and echo some of the sentiments that my city council, my peer city councils have mentioned. Um, and I also, in addition to, um, having the same concerns, in my district, there's a ton of stairs, right, that are not lit, um, and it's a huge problem. And I've tried to reach out to folks, um, residents reach out to me. I use the stair, like, it's easier for me to take my, my children to school using the stairs that are, that go from Clark to Broadway, and I stopped using those stairs unfortunately because of the, the things that I see, needles and things that are unsafe. There's the, the stairs that are, like, in the, kind of like behind Soldier's Home, that is a wreck. And the ton of, unfortunately, like homeless people stay overnight there. You can see sometimes that there's, como se dice, like tarps and stuff like that. And so it's, it's unfortunate because I know that, that also, like, functions as shelter for folks, but at the same time, it's, it's extremely scary, and those stairs within itself are super unsafe, and it's very, very dark there as well. And so I just want to make sure, I want to echo what my peers said, but we definitely have to do something because it's true, where, like, las maldades se hacen en la oscuridad. I don't know how to say that in English. But, you know, like, things, negative, negative things happen and unsafe things happen in the dark. And so we need to make sure that we, we light our city so that, you know, we prevent that from happening. Yeah. There you go.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Next order of business?
Next, we have an order introduced by Counsel Recupero ordered that the city manager provide an update to the city council as to how many people are utilizing bike lanes in the city of Chelsea.
She recognizes Counsel Recupero.
Adopted, the suspension, like to speak on it.
Seeing no objections, you have the floor, Counselor.
The only thing I'm asking for is to see how the bike lanes are working, if they're working or they're not working. From, because I get a lot of complaints from people, and they say that a lot of section of the city where the bike lanes are located creates a bigger congestion. So I was just wondering, if the congestion is there, what can we do? I don't know what we can actually do, but maybe we should revise and look around, see, because our city is small and the traffic keeps coming. They keep saying it has to do with the tunnel, but the tunnel is open and the traffic is still there. So it really has nothing to do with the tunnel, it has to do with the more cars are coming to our city. And bike lanes is a great thing. I'm not against bike lanes. I'm just curious to see how many people use it. Like, do the good our way, the bad, you know? That's what I'm trying to understand. Is it good to have them or is it better to get rid of them? Because you can only have certain things. From what I can see is people are complaining that they can't get from point A to point B, it takes them an hour, where it used to take them five minutes. And a lot of them are saying because the bike lanes are closing it, they're making it smaller. Our city was built over a hundred years ago, who knows how long it was built, and the roads were made for horses back in those days, they weren't made for cars. So now you've got an influx of cars, a lots, a lot of cars. So how do we put everything combined? It's very hard to come to a solution, but our job is maybe to try to have a solution where everybody has a better quality of life, because this way, the quality of life is not getting better, it's getting worse. Because I see myself, where I live, it takes me twenty-five minutes to go from one corner just to go to the mullahs. Some days, it takes me forty minutes, and it used to take me five minutes. So I'm not blaming the bike lanes, I'm blaming if you shrink the roads, you make them smaller, what used to be two cars, now it's one car. So one car is going to take a lot longer than two cars. That's logical. And whatever it is, maybe we should come to a solution, that's all it is. I want at least to understand how it's working, and I don't know how it's working. So I want the city manager to let me know how it is. If it's working, fine. If it's not, maybe we should revise, go back to it, and try to get rid of it, or try to, whatever it is. If it's working, you leave it alone. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Next order.
Next, we have an order introduced by Counsel President Robinson ordered that pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter two sixty-eight A, Section twenty B, the Chelsea City Council hereby approves a conflict of interest exemption for the part-time election administrative support and poll workers in the city clerk's elections department to be held by city and school employees and board and commission members effective immediately.
Move to adopt by roll call vote.
Seeing no objections, the clerk will call a roll.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Judith Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Tenere Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Recupero?
Yes.
Counselor Vito?
Yes.
Counselor De Jesus?
Yes.
Counselor Hubbleburg?
Yes.
Counselor Vega?
Yes.
And Counselor Taylor.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Eleven in favor, none opposed, order adopted. Next, we have an order introduced by Councilors Lopez, Recupero, and Vito ordered that the Chelsea City Manager, Traffic and Parking Commission, and Department of Public Works remove the bicycle lane on Third Street from Broadway to Chestnut Street due to heavy traffic congestion in the area.
Counsel Lopez?
I filed communications, sent it to Traffic and Parking, and I would like to speak on it.
Under suspension, seeing no objections, you have the floor, Counselor.
Thank you. This is, again, as Counselor Recupero was talking, part of, uh, Third Street from, from Broadway to Chestnut used to be two lanes. It wasn't marked for two lanes, but people used to make it two lanes. Now, there's only one car can fit there in a bike lane. So what happened is, is all that traffic is backing up all the way to Pearl Street, Park Street, all that area. I live in Charlotte, when I go up on Charlotte to Congress, the traffic is already there until it passed Shorewood Street, almost of Charlotte, because all that backed up of traffic. So we need to see what we can do about, take that piece of bike lane from Broadway to Chestnut and see what happens. That traffic wasn't there before, but since they put the bike lane there, it's a mess. Thank you.
Counselor Vito?
Thank you, Mr. President. I echo everything that Counselor Lopez said, and also what Counselor Recupero has said previously about the lights or the bike lanes. I think that, I think that we're not planning appropriately, and to be honest with you, this is not just a quality of life, this is a public health issue. I was once stuck on Pearl Street, the little part where Cusola Sip is, for half an hour, and all I could think to myself was, crap, we have, we are, our, our border is a bunch of shore tanks, God forbid there's a fire, how am I going to get out of here? And I've said this story over and over again, but it's, it's, we're not planning accordingly. I think it's great that we want to try to accommodate everyone, and we want to accommodate the four modes of transportation, pedestrians, cyclists, public, public transportation and private vehicles. But we can't even keep our lights on. So I, I don't know, I just feel like we're not, it's like the left hand isn't talking to the right hand, and the people that are suffering are regular folks here, yes, there's more traffic coming into the city. We need to plan for that, and I don't think we should be trying to accommodate bikes when we still haven't figured out what we're doing with our vehicles. I think the city needs to take a really hard look at themselves. I don't know who's making these decisions, I don't know who their urban planners are. We need to do better. This is a huge issue. Now, I don't, I wish we can accommodate all these, all the bikes. I wish the whole city was, could have bike lanes. We're just not there yet, and I think we need to face that reality. Thank you.
Counselor Taylor?
So I couldn't agree more with my fellow counselors on this type of thing. The road to hell is paved with good intentions.
Does it have a bike lane?
And, and, and I'll tell you, you cannot have everything, especially in a, in a small, compact city like Chelsea. And let me warn the city, because this problem is not going to get better. This problem is going to get worse, okay? How many units are they building in Everett, okay? I mean, the, traffic in Chelsea is going to come to a complete standstill and very soon, okay? The point about a lack of kind of planning or foresight, and I know it's hard because you have other cities doing other things too that are adding to our problem, but, you know, if, if, if the decision makers here need to work with those other cities or try to find out what's going on so that we can plan appropriately to try to mitigate some of this disaster. And it's true what Counselor Recupero said about just getting to Market Basket. I mean, there are times when I do not want to drive in Chelsea. So I think it's incumbent upon all of us not to, you know, everybody wants some pie in the sky, like, we want bike lanes, we want this, we want that, you know, that for other cities might work out. Chelsea is very unique, and so we, we got to do what works for Chelsea, not what some other, you know, politician somewhere else wants, you know, some sort of cookie cutter thing. This is absurd, really. And, and this is why I'm standing up and speaking on this, because I think that this is, when, I love it when counselors get up here and they talk about being proactive, because this is what city government needs to be, proactive. And we've got problems here that need to be solved, and we're just like, kind of like, oh, we've got a great idea, let's put bike lanes. Well, look what happens. The people that want to save the environment for the bike lanes, I, I commend them, but how much more emissions is going, sitting in traffic? Right? I mean, come on, let's be, let's be realistic here. So, you know, I would like, I would actually like to have a, a subcommittee on this, and, and we, we are still waiting for our subcommittee with the Traffic Commission, okay? This needs to happen, folks, this needs to happen. That's all I've got to say.
Are you offering an amendment to Senator Conference?
There's already a pending one, we just have to.
I mean, well, I mean, if, if, so, if we don't, if we don't get a subcommittee set up with the Traffic Commission by the next meeting, then yes, I, I, I think you'll find another order for, for that to happen, you know? But, but like I said in a, in a previous meeting, we are not going to be ignored, and there are, there are things that need to happen that this body, this elected body of this city has to weigh in on. And it's not, it's, we're not getting it, and, and I intend that we do.
Thank you, Counselor. Next order. Counselor Brown?
So we all voted for all that's being done on Third and Chestnut Street. We all voted for it. Everyone, all of these members of this body here, we all voted for that. We had surveys, we looked at it, we brought it back and forth, we went one way and came to a conclusion. I don't personally think the bike lane is all the issue down there. Everyone knows that's a crossing guard for children going back and forth to school, there's a lot of construction going on, there's a lot of workplaces that's been blocked off of folks going two ways instead of one way down Broadway. I do agree that if you want to ask the city manager to do something, that we need to come back with some concrete evidence of what we want to do and not just get rid of a bike lane. A bike lane is not going to allow the traffic to run smoothly. Matter of fact, the bike lane is to take traffic off the streets because people are riding bikes. I see people going to work on bikes, I see people riding, and when you come, that's a gateway. No, you can't go to Tobin Bridge, but you can cut down Everett Ave, you go down Williams School, and you go back through ninety-nine. That's a gateway, that's why it was designed that way. We don't want folks going all around the corner, we wanted them to go straight to try to get to their narrow place. So I'm all for a subcommittee to find out what we need to do, but we also need to look at the businesses down there, we need to look at the traffics down there. You're talking about the housings, and, and we just built, there was a property just built on Chestnut Street that has, how many units? That have cars. And where do those cars go? They go down, they stop at the corner of Everett Ave and Third, and they slow up traffic. Let's take in consideration what happened the last few months with the closing of the tunnel. So let's not just say that traffic is being held up and stopped up only because of bike lane. It's from one stretch, we're talking about Third Street, where there's a bus stop at, and that's it. I, I just can't believe that's the cause of all the traffic that you're complaining about. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. You already spoke on the order.
I didn't speak on this.
All right. You have the floor, then, Counselor.
You know, if I didn't speak, you let me speak.
Yeah, right, if you didn't speak, you have the.
Well, if you were paying attention, everybody else spoke but me.
Wow.
So here we go, here's what I want to say. I'm back to what I said earlier. You could do all the studies you want, I've lived in this city forty-five years. What I understand is this city has more traffic than it used to have. So now we want to have a, a good quality of life for the people that live here. Let's stop arguing, there's that, that, fix it. That's what you're supposed to be here. I've been here a while, and the only thing I care about is the quality of life for the people. There should be no issues how to fix it. If the bike lane is the problem, get rid of it. If the bike lane's not the problem, you don't get rid of it. But I know, no matter what you do, there's traffic, there's four times than it used to be. And it's gonna, like, my fellow counselor says, there's more and more coming. I live on a one-way street, and some days when it's shut, I got cars coming up one-way street. They're going up the one-way street, and you can't even move. So I don't know what the city can do to fix it. They tried, the other day, they were putting barriers over there, closing the street with cars, but what you have to do is you have to go back and study again, figure out some type of way to help the people that live here, because the situation ain't going to get any better. It, it has nothing to do with the bike lane, it has nothing to do with this lane, it has to do with the quality of life for the people that live here. So if that is the problem, like I said earlier, you get rid of it. If it ain't the problem, you leave it alone. Just find out what the problem is, because it ain't going to get any better, and it's not. I can tell you from all the years that I've lived here, and most of the councils that lived here for a while, can tell you now that the traffic is twice as bad as it ever was before. So I don't know what we can do, but we should at least try. If you never try to do nothing, what is the point of us? We should try. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other speakers on the matter? Seeing none, clerk will read the following order.
Next, we have an order introduced by Councilors Lopez, Recupero, and Vito ordered that the city manager provide an update to the city council as to the restoration of the commuter rail quiet zone.
She recognizes Counsel Lopez.
Adopted under suspension, and I would like to speak on it.
Seeing no objections, you have the floor, Counselor.
Yeah, this is, this has been a problem for a long time. Day and night, anyhow, the train always put the horn and wake up us, the children, the elderly, and our veterans who has a stress disorder. I would like to see what is the update on this. We appropriate some money to get it done, get it fixed, I haven't seen anything done. So I just want an update, and what's going on? This, this is a problem also, and need to get fixed. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Vito.
Thank you, Mr. President, echoing what my brother counselor has said. We have industry, we have salt piles, we have airplanes, we have environmental inequities, we are in heat island, we have a bunch of shore tanks that leave funny smells in our neighborhoods, we get stuck in traffic, and I, I am immunocompromised, and for the average person, they won't recognize it. But when I travel outside of Chelsea, I detox from the pollution in my lungs, and when I come back, I immediately get sick. For the average able-bodied person, they don't recognize that, but it's a reality that I live every day. Can we at least be able to sleep at night and maybe not hear these loud noises? Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Vega.
I, I echo what my peers have stated. I also want to say that most recently, over the summer, I was in, in affluent community, I want to say either in Maine or New Hampshire, and the clear differences were, you know, that Chelsea's an environmental justice community, the people are people of color that look more like me, and where I was visiting, the people look more like Brian in my hair here, top. And I was crossing the street, and there was a train coming, and I didn't hear it, and it was like right there, and I'm, I, it was shocking to me because I was like, wait a minute, like, it did not make sense to me why there was, like, there was no horn, no nothing, and in Chelsea, I live in Clark Ave on the hill, and I hear it, so I can only imagine the folks that live much closer to it. So I don't know what the difference is, and why is it that in that community, you could, I saw it right in front of me, and there was no noise, and here there is, and this is something that we've been pressing and pushing for a very, very long time, and still has, nothing has been done, so something has to give.
Okay, any other speakers? Counselor Brown?
Again, this is an issue that we all should be on board with. Me and the city manager, we had this discussion this past summer, and to this day, we have done everything that they've asked us to do. We've actually done everything, every dime that we owe this company to come in and do what they have to do, it's been paid. I encourage you to talk to the city manager about what we should be doing, but at this point, you know, we're in a waiting game here, and we've been in the waiting game at once. It was two thousand and twenty-three this year, then we were supposed to be getting it done. Doesn't look like it's going to happen. I, I have the frustration of dealing with the folks to tell them, look, I told you two thousand and twenty-three, our last conversation we had this summer, it's probably going to be sometime in the middle of two thousand and twenty-four when they even consider doing what they're supposed to be doing. We've paid for all of the workers, and we had to do that. We've paid for everything we needed to to have our portion up to date, it's in their hands, and they look at us, unfortunately, as a, not a big priority at this moment. But I understand, we hear from the business owners, from the hotels, their customers, they come in, their flight attendants, their stewardess, their plane pilots, drivers, they like, wow, why do I have to hear this at four o'clock in the morning? And I hear it at four o'clock in the morning, and it's hard to go back to sleep. But again, we should actually have some conversation at the full body and find out so we don't hear spurs of what's going on, to find out what's being done. So I encourage you to reach out to our city manager. Thank you.
Counselor Taylor?
I just want to make one brief point. This was, you know, when I came on, this was a, this was a, an issue, and it was supposed to be resolved last December, and of course, it wasn't, and, and so on and on and on and on. So I look forward to the update. I just want to make a point about, again, about the city government being proactive. This is happening because business was not taken care of before, okay? And it's incumbent upon this body to put the pressure on the city to make sure that the stuff that needs to happen actually happens, okay? So again, colleagues, let's, let's, let's make sure that, that, you know, stuff happens that is supposed to happen, we can't just let things go by, and, and, you know, we got to, we got to make sure that, that we take proactive measures to make sure that the city does its job. By the way, I think.
By the way, I think most of the city, I've said this to the city manager, most of the people that work in our city government, I think are top-notch. So, so, but some, sometimes people, sometimes, you know, stuff slips through that shouldn't. And past city councils have also dropped the ball. So, at, at any rate, that's my point. Let's all do our due diligence.
Counsel Recupero.
From what I, this has been going on for a while. The last city manager said that there was a study, and they were waiting for funds from the federal government to put gates, or some proof gates, whatever it is, right? What happens with a city is this, that the city council doesn't really communicate with the other people, because the other, the, the people that run our city don't communicate with us. They let us, like, I've never received any kind of communication telling me what happened with that. Any of us ever received any communication saying, this is what's gonna go on? That we're waiting for the funds to come, we're waiting for this. What we, what this city needs to do, what, it's plain and simple. The people that are elected need to know what goes on, and they need to spend more time, or they need more or less to understand what the city's doing, or what they're gonna do about it. Because if we don't know, when people ask us, what is our reply? And it's not this body's fault, because if they're not, they don't know, how are they gonna answer when people asking questions? They can't, just like they said, well, I remember that, okay, we're gonna put the gates. When are they coming? Any of us know when the gates are coming? I never knew when the gates are coming. They never sent a letter saying, well, the gates are gonna be six months down the road, a year down the road, two years down the road. That's the hope. The point is, is plain and simple. We, no matter how proactive we are, we can only be a certain way if management doesn't give it to us. They have to, it has to be, I think there's a lack of communication between the city council and the administrative body of the city. That's what needs to be done. It needs more communication. Can't put the blame on us, it can't put the blame on them. It has to be a mutual understanding, where I think this city council, or the next council, or whatever council stays here for twenty years, needs to be more in, in communication with the administration that runs the city. And then this city will be a better place for us to live. That's all I have to say. I don't have to say much more.
Any other speakers? Seeing none.
We have an order introduced by Counsel Hattlerberg and received late...
I object to the wait order.
Can we challenge the chair?
No. Go to the next meeting. Couple of quick announcements. The Call and Center will provide a packet containing a list of sample questions, as well as fair employment standards and MCAD guidelines and some, for next week. We're gonna have a meeting on September twentieth at six o'clock. The search committee will have a special meeting at seven o'clock to deliver the names to the council on, on the twentieth, and...
Is that seven o'clock?
Seven o'clock. We're at six o'clock.
So six first?
Yes. And we scheduled the interviews for Saturday, September thirtieth, starting at ten AM.
September thirty?
It's a Saturday. Any other announcements? Counsel Taylor.
I just want to make it clear too, that there's, there's been a, kind of an uptick, I think, in drug activity in the city. We see it on both ends, both the, both the dealers. I know in my district, there's a lot of scooter action, and a lot of, a lot of people calling me, seeing that they're seeing a lot of activity in Prattville. There's all, I've also had a lot of calls on the other end of it with, with the addicted, you know, having, having problems in public places. So, I, I would just want to let the public know too, that if you, if you, if you see something, please say something, really, like, let, let's, let's, let's put, you know, tamp this down right away. I think that, that it's obvious, and I, I've talked to some other counselors, there've been issues in other parts of the city as well. So, please, if you see something, reach out and say something to call the police, or, or at least reach out to your city councilor, so that we can try to get this kind of under control. I know the Chelsea Police Department does a, does a great job, but we all need to work together in order to kind of tamp this down, and, and, you know, they can't be everywhere at once. So, community members, please, reach out, and let's try to stop this. Thank you.
Counsel Recupero.
I don't know if people know, but Counsel Lopez's mother passed away. And he wasn't here for that reason, you know, he wasn't, I don't know if they know, but his, his mother passed away. And this, another announcement too. The poetry walk this year is starting again. So people that are interested in going to the poetry walk, they should go. It's a good thing. It teaches, it educates the young kids, and even grown-ups like me, how to be more passionate, how to be more caring, and how to speak maybe in a better manner to a lot of other people, because there's nothing better than having a nice poetry or some nice way to talk to somebody. They understand you better. And when I was a young man, I wished I had poetry, so I could understand, I could speak even better. But maybe this will help the young people of Chelsea get, so go out there, go and enjoy yourself. Learn how to do poetry. For a young man, it's the best thing if you want to talk to a woman. And for a woman, it's the best thing if you want to talk to a man. That's the best way to get to it. So go out and enjoy yourself.
Thank you. Counsel Vito.
And if you're a woman, and you want to meet a woman, or a man, you want to meet a man, or a dog, whatever you choose is your business.
That's your business.
I, yes. I wanted to make, first of all, welcome back, everyone. And I hope we're ready to get to work, because we have a lot of things that we need to work on. We have a lot of concerns that we've kind of been waiting for us to start meeting again. I don't know, you know, the pandemic, the pandemic, there was a lot of division previously, but I'm really hoping we can all figure out how to work cohesively, because we have concerns that we need to address. And I think that if people see that we're divided, they're not gonna pay attention to us, and so, we're stronger together. The other thing I want to say is, I was really concerned about what I heard about Chelsea Pride. For years, we've had a problem with Pop Warner and Pride. I tried to get them to meet with each other. They wouldn't. Pop Warner, I think, is not even, it's not even active right now. So to hear that the only football league that we had for our youth is in trouble or in shambles, I think it's something that we, as a council, really need to figure out what we do, because they do use our public fields, we do give out scholarships. And it's incumbent upon us to make sure that we're having activities for our young people to stay off the streets. And then I have a moment of silence, but I'll wait for other counselors.
Any other public announcements?
I just wanted to also, you know, welcome everyone back from the break, and I just wanted to give a few shout-outs to some of our departments throughout the break, who were very involved and present in the community. Anytime in my district, there was concerns with some type of building or structure, DPW and ISD, always present, Mike McAtier. Steve from nine-one-one, extremely helpful. This man is always in the front lines for our community, whether it's a fire or some type of displacement. He is there connecting all of the resources in the community himself. And so shout-out to Steve. And then Alex and Anna Sophia for making sure that families are getting services. Those who are most vulnerable, who are not able to navigate the services, that those services are reaching them in their homes. And as someone mentioned earlier, the navigators, who are two amazing, amazing workers, Jason and Tim, our North Suffolk navigators, always in the community, always making sure that families have what they need to overcome whatever challenges they're facing. And then I just want to shout out someone who's been talking to me about Chelsea Day for the past nine months, Cheryl. Chelsea Day is approaching, guys, and we are really excited, and so I hope the community comes out. It's gonna be huge. I'm excited. I know a lot of folks in the council are excited. This Saturday, from twelve to four, find us at Chelsea Day.
Also, our staff, Cliff and Jessica, that have been holding down the fort while we were away.
I can hear you.
Who have been holding down the fort.
Our council staff.
Yeah, they've done an amazing job while you were away. When you, at some point, they'll return with all new furniture.
Are we ready for a moment of silence?
Yes.
I'd like to have one for Counsel Lopez's mom, Jesús Valiente Pérez.
And also for nine-eleven, for all those who perished on that day. And there were connections back here in Chelsea on, on some of the planes related to the McFarland family. All right, thank you, and seeing now, no further business before this council. We are adjourned.